All right, it looks like we have Councilmember Tuttle online with us, so I think we have everyone. So, let's get started.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on page one, other than just a note that you've got three proclamations and an award. On page two, number one, new council business. This would set a data hearing for the Stadium Hotel TIF project plan. You have approved the TIF, creation of the TIF district, but you have not put in place the project plan that reflects the development agreement with EPC. So, this would talk about the construction of 155-room hotel, 150-unit apartment complex, 10,000 square feet of retail space, and 260-space garage. Again, that's all consistent with what you've already previously approved. Estimated investment in the project is $110 million on the part of EPC.
What was the original projected investment for that project?
Well, it was in phases, and I don't remember the, at the end of the...
It was $65 million?
Yeah.
$65 million?
It was like $110 million.
Versus $110, okay.
Well, we're getting a lot of constituent questions about pulling it out of the TIF and creating a new TIF. Can we kind of briefly go through that?
Yeah, Troy, you want to address that?
Yeah, so...
Go to Mike.
Welcome to the table.
Testing. Okay, so, yes, this is a two-part. First and foremost, the only thing that transpires on Tuesday is setting a public hearing on November 21st, right? There's no, there's no action, there's no public input by state law. We have to set a public hearing for this. That's the only thing that's transpiring on Tuesday, is we're simply requesting to set a public hearing for November 21st for two items. Number one is an amendment to the original development plan, right? So, the, the original district that was created, the Delano Ballpark Redevelopment District, was step one. Then there was a redevelopment plan which mirrored the boundaries of the district, okay? And that took into consideration all development projects within the entire district, okay? Which included hotel, office, retail, so on and so forth. So, as that project has evolved, right? Now that we're introducing multifamily residential rather than office, office market's gotten soft, as that project has evolved, we're also contemplating, as you may recall, we're proposing to own and operate the parking structure rather than it being a private parking structure that's now a public, it would be a public parking structure. So, there's just some nuances that have changed, as well as, so project scope has changed, cost of construction has changed, the overall project has gone from, like, you know, what I think was originally like some $65 million now to well over $110 million, right? So, all of these changes, there's an opportunity to go in and separate and create within the original project boundaries two project areas, right? So, under the new project area, it includes not only the hotel and multifamily residential, the retail and the parking, but also those riverfront improvements on the east side of McLean. So, those become two different project areas within the same original plan and sets forth, again, more definition around the project scope that's actually been proposed as part of the development agreement that you all approved earlier this year. So, again, there's kind of rhyme and reason to why we're doing this, in order to get the necessary entitlements in place, so that the developer can continue to achieve the benchmarks of commencement of construction next year. And so, we're continuing to just follow the timeline, the development timeline associated with this. Next Tuesday just sets the public hearing for November 21st, wherein we can get public comment, and then council can take action at some point in the future, but by state law, we have to set a public hearing.
Has council taken any action to establish a separate TIF prior to this? Or is this the first time the council's taken action on that?
On this particular district, no. On other districts, yes. This is common for a project plan associated to the district to set forth that the district boundaries and project areas within the district boundaries may change and evolve, because you don't know when you set up the district in the original project plan, all the projects that are going to get presented to you at some point in the future, right? So, these, these are somewhat fluid types of plans. It's not uncommon to amend a project plan, create a new project area, create a new project plan as those projects present themselves. That's not uncommon. This is the first one for this particular district and plan.
Okay. The questions I'm being asked is, what's the value of new project area? And is that value being taken away from the original stadium idea that we looked at? I think you guys were probably getting that question.
No.
No.
Nothing's being taken away from the, all the same. In fact, if anything, again, the numbers have gotten larger, right? Because cost of construction has gone up, so all of the sales tax that's being generated will go back in to pay off the stadium. All of the transient gas tax dollars that are going to be generated go back to pay on the stadium. There's nothing that has changed, so to speak, in any of the dollars being contemplated to pay off the stadium and what was previously committed to TIF to go towards paying off a hotel, an office building at that point in time and retail. Again, the only thing that's changed is multifamily residential and replace a office.
Maybe, maybe let's bring it back to what you approved. When the, when you, we cut the deal with EPC, this codifies that, right? And allows us to collect the TIF dollars, and that will go for developer incentives and for debt service for the stadium.
It will go towards debt service.
It will, it will go towards debt service. And in the PowerPoint presentation on Tuesday, to help address that question, we'll go ahead and show that whole, that incentive chart that we had before, and that'll show all of the revenue sources.
And I apologize, I'm asking a lot of questions, because Councilmember Frye and I are going to be out of town, and we're going to have limited access to see what's going on. Another question, and again, I'll be looking for what percentage will be going to debt service for the stadium? You know that number off the top of your head, do you?
So, again, that table that was provided in the staff report back when you all approved the new development agreements earlier this year, that's the model that we're looking at. It goes through all of the various aspects of the project, all the revenue streams associated with it, and how that has evolved from the original development plan to the 22 plan. And even now, you can see how there will be an increased revenue stream across all of this.
Seeing a TIF go toward multifamily, I think the city did this on Topgolf. Is that something we've exercised at other times, too?
Yes, TIF has been used in multifamily residential. Yeah, that's not uncommon.
Do you have any other examples?
Man, not off the top of my head. I can get some...
I think, we, we, someone asked that, one of the council members asked that question previously, and I know we identify those, we can find that information.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Troy. Is, is there any way I could get a copy of the slides or something prior to the meeting, just since I, maybe we won't be able to attend?
Absolutely.
So, I, I am concerned if this is more of a hot topic, which it has been, when it comes to getting information out, ensuring that folks, I think, understand the difference between voting for a TIF and voting for a, a, a public hearing. But if we're going to have two councilmembers out, I am concerned about taking on something that has generated a, a lot of interest, if we're not going to be at full strength when it comes to our voting power and also our discussion. And frankly, no offense to my colleagues, two of the most experienced legislative minds on the bench will be gone for this. And so, I, I'm, I'm wondering if we were to put this off until we're at full strength as far as institutional knowledge, as far as, if that would be a better, which gives us a little more time to talk about, I think, what the intention is for staff and others to talk about that. Would that be something that the council would be more interested in? If we put it off, we get these guys back?
If I can, I gave some thought to that, right? Because I knew we'd be down to, and, you know, ample notice. The only problem with that is it pushes us back into next month for the establishment of the hearing date, and then that pushes that off a month as well. And getting these, getting this in place keeps us on a timeframe for the developer to deliver on the schedule that we have, right? And so, I, I didn't want to lose time, and I wanted to keep the developer on development of plans and getting something out of the ground, and that was the only reason. If we didn't have a public hearing scheduled for the 21st of November, I would say, yeah, I would, I definitely understand that, but the real meat of the issue is going to be on the 21st, and it gives us over a month now to answer questions that come up, not just from councilmembers going forward, but also from the public. So, we got a lot of time to address those issues. It's up to you, but that's the reason why I didn't recommend...
Of course.
It'll only be two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, and I get the administrative perspective of keeping things on, on schedule. I think that's why, you know, you all work towards keeping our development opportunities moving ahead. That, that's kind of y'all's role. Ours is to also navigate, I think, the, the, the public information as well, and making sure that folks know what's happening and that they are comfortable with the direction we're, we're heading. So, I, again, like, I think it's something we should talk about, and perhaps, you know, as we move forward with it, just as a council, I just want to throw that as an idea. We don't have to come up with, and I, with a, we don't have to come up with a plan at this moment, but we should be thinking about when it, when it does come up on the bench, do we want to put it off until we're, have better information out there, until we can actually address some of these issues, until we have Councilmember Frye, Councilmember Bluebaw back on the bench? Or do we want to keep moving forward? So, I just want to throw that out there to, to the council. I, I think, I, I understand administrative's perspective, and I also understand the public desire for more information in, in this as well. So, I think it's going to be one of those interesting issues as we walk forward on, you know, how to best to handle it policy-wise, but also when it comes to communicating and interacting with the public, and ensuring that, that they know the intention and what we're doing.
I, I guess, Mayor, if Councilmember Frye and I don't have the opportunity to participate in the meeting, and you guys aren't comfortable with it, you guys could always, at that time, make, make a motion to put it off till the first week.
And that's why, that's why I'm throwing out there, is that we have other options if we need to. Well, I'd love to, shouldn't say this, because I know that the media's watching this, I was going to say, I'd love to FaceTime you guys while you're rolling dice between meetings, and I'm not sure if we're going to get the, the full effect of discussion that, that we would get if you guys were there with us. So, and I recognize that, you know, you all, you know, I think, I'm pretty sure Jeff, excuse me, Councilmember Bluebaw is the longest-serving councilmember since decades. So, I, I kind of, I kind of want you guys at the table when these questions come up, you got the institutional knowledge, you know, I don't think anyone reads closer detail than Brian Frye does. I think that there's a, it just feels like as we, we go through this, if it's more controversial, we're always better off with folks at the table who can help us navigate the, the public discussion as well, so.
Just real quick, two questions. You said that this happened before, were you talking about other municipalities? Or do we have any examples of this in Wichita where we split up the TIF like this?
So, my response is, in Wichita, there have been project plans that have been amended to redefine project areas as projects have presented themselves. Yes, that has happened in Wichita.
Okay, and the second question is, was this discussed? Did we know about this when we were negotiating with EPC?
Yeah, nothing has changed from back when the development agreement was approved earlier this year, right? When that development agreement was approved, and one party of the three-party agreement was willing to remove themselves, and we now entered into a two-party agreement, and now that party has an opportunity to pursue the development that was originally contemplated, again, with the minor changes to, it's no longer office, it's now multifamily residential, and now we're talking about owning a parking asset versus it being privately owned, a few minor, nothing has changed. That, all of that same information that was presented to you all several months ago, this is just the entitlement process going forward to make all of that happen, right? So, things like, you know, are height amendments going to be appropriate? So, for building heights, right? Are occupancy numbers going to be appropriate, right? So, all of those plating, those kind of things, all of that, those are the entitlement processes that have to be lined up in order that, early next year, when a building permit application is submitted, they have all the entitlements in place in order for a building permit to be issued.
But did they give any indication that this is the route that they were wanting to take?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We, we kind of eyes wide open. We knew that we were going to have to go through some planned unit development amendments, and that we were going to have to possibly do some replating and those kind of things in order to set the stage for them being able to get a building permit. The development agreement laid out really high level, right? Things like tax increment financing, things like uses, things like who is going to be responsible for what, when, where, and how, right? The development agreement lays the foundation. The next layer is, you got to kind of frame up the context of getting the entitlements in order so that they can get the building permit application submitted and approved.
Thank you.
So, the action on Tuesday, again, is just the hearing to set the date for November 21st to do the full presentation and get all the facts.
Correct.
If we delay it, because we don't have a full body, and I appreciate that, Mayor, the earliest we'd be looking at rescheduling this would be November 7th, because the 24th is a consent, the 31st is no meeting, and then, so now we're looking at three weeks. What does that do to that November 21st date? Does that push it back three weeks? So, now you're looking at the end of December. I'm worried about, and trying to be consequent, of the timeline and the benchmarks that we set in place with this project. We have very aggressive goals to get this built and operational, too. So, the longer we delay it, on a procedural matter, puts us more at risk. So, I, I appreciate us being here, but I think for just setting a hearing date, I think we need to move forward.
Right, and, and that's, that's the, the balance we play, right? Where if we put the hearing, if we put this item off, it puts, puts off the entire project three weeks. What is the consequences of that? And, so, it, that's, that's, and I, I love the feedback, because that's what we're going into this weekend thinking about, right? Like, what, and we're all going to be out in the public this weekend, having opportunities to interact with folks, and to have these conversations. Everyone in this room, I believe, except for Brian, Troy, has some type of public hearing, public event scheduled where we can have these conversations. And I think that my comments, besides being somewhat shorthanded on the bench, is, is basically, there is an option as we move forward. If we're hearing from the public that, hey, we wanted, we want more info on this, then there's that option. So, that's more of what I'm trying to discuss as we move forward, is that, that we should keep an open mind as we go into the weekend, interact with the people we work for, and then when we come back on Tuesday, we might have a different game plan. But you are right and correct that the, the purpose is to schedule the public hearing, it's not to create the new TIF. And I think that might have got lost in some online discussion by people who are seen as folks who are somewhat watchdogs. So, you know, can we, how do we, how do we engage to ensure that folks are aware of what, what the process is and what the intentions are? So, I just want to throw that out there. If you're getting a lot of pushback, and we need more time to, to dialogue with the public, there is that option. However, the consequence is it does get pushed back a couple weeks, or three weeks, and what does that look like, so?
Do we have any plans for a public engagement on this? Maybe a meeting that people can come to and ask the questions and get them answered?
So, obviously, we're open to receiving questions and responding to those questions at any point during the process. This item did go before Metropolitan Area Planning Commission yesterday afternoon, did receive a vote, if I'm not mistaken, of...
10 to 1.
10 to 1. Recommendation for, that was consistent with the plan, and was consistent with everything that they had available to them. And so, yeah, we're, we're certainly open for conversation. As far as stakeholder engagement, I'm not really sure. Again, nothing has changed in the plan, right? Again, the only things that have changed in the plan is that they're not doing office anymore, they're doing multifamily residential, and it's now sort of a public parking garage rather than a private parking garage. Those are really the only two nuances that have changed in the entire timeline. There's maybe a third one, is there is a party to that that is no longer engaged, right? And so, nothing has changed. I'm not sure what kind of community stakeholder engagement we might engage in.
Yeah, I mean, just something at the library where...
Sure.
People who really pay attention to this kind of stuff can come and dialogue with.
We are certainly, I will certainly make myself available. My staff will certainly make ourselves available, if that's the desire of City Council, to make ourselves available for an open house somewhere. We could certainly do that, or if there's direct, specific questions that we can respond to, certainly reach out to our offices.
The, the whole TIF thing is very confusing to us, as well as the public.
Sure.
I think the public's main concern is they want to, they want to feel good that we're going to get the appropriate debt service to pay off the stadium and not have to get into taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, correct.
Right. All right, well, I don't think, I don't think the attention is to come into a real decision on this item, obviously, now that we're just going over the agenda, but we do appreciate the, pretty much the, the bonus presentation. So, thank you for being here to help us talk about this a bit more. Mr. Manager, what else we got?
Hold on just a second, please. All right. Number two, would approve a $70,000 budget adjustment to reflect stronger activity at the golf courses than we even anticipated when we had the amended budget for the year. Also, we anticipate that will, the golf system will be able to transfer at least $500,000 to the capital improvement project fund to finance improvements at the golf courses.
What did you say?
$500,000.
I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
$500,000 into my account. Okay. Page three, number three, this would approve $5.1 million in improvements to city-owned facilities, and $1.2 million for additional improvements to C2, and that's all for 2024. Number four would approve $1.5 million to pave 17 dirt streets or street segments in 2024. Number five would approve $13 million for improvements to 350, 315 lane miles of streets in 2024. Number six would approve a contract for collection of delinquent court fines, fees, and costs. Number seven would approve $100,000 for the installation of new data cable in city-owned facilities. That's all I have on page three. On page four, number one is a conditional use. It's in front of you because there was a resident petition in opposition. Down at the bottom, non-consent housing agenda, number one, would increase the payment standards for the 2024 Housing Choice voucher program. Page five, under council member agenda number two, this would be the start of a discussion on amendment to the nondiscrimination ordinance, as requested by the mayor. Mayor, I don't know if you want to summarize it at all?
The, sorry about that. Yes, the nondiscrimination ordinance, this is to update the ordinance to include hairstyles that are natural hairstyles for people of particular races, so that that itself isn't discriminated against. It's a best practice, and we're working with a national organization, as well as local legislative leaders, to, to, to create this amendment. And of course, our legal staff, thank you so much to our legal staff, has been working on this as well. I know that Councilmember Johnson has also been in these meetings, he might have something to add to this. But basically, it's ensuring that, that we continue to modernize the nondiscrimination ordinance so that it better serves the public. And we will have, I think, Michelle, who will be joining us from an organization that focuses nationally, but their territory is really Missouri and Kansas, to come in and talk more about, so we'll have to have Zoom set up, of course, to our teams, to talk more about, more, more extensively about this item.
That's all on page five. On page six, 3A, this is our annual allocation for sediment control payments to property owners located in the Cheney Lake watershed. This is implementation of best practices in order to control the amount of sediment that goes into Cheney.
Cheney has water?
Yeah, for the limited water it has. It has more water than it would if it wasn't for this.
It's wet still, but...
Page seven, number seven, would approve over $100,000 payment for condemnation award for the acquisition of property on West Street. Number nine would approve $134 million IRB issue for Wesley Medical Center improvements. Since 2018, Wesley has invested over $175 million in its facilities and created 105 new jobs. That investment and job creation exceeds the targets that were included in the original IRB documents. I don't have anything on page eight, or page nine, or page 10. Page 11 is, is the start of some improvements to the Eisenhower Terminal. Believe it or not, it's actually starting to show its age, eight years old now. It will approve a contract for analysis and design of various terminal improvements at Eisenhower, keep us modern and reflective of changes in technology and air practices. Also, we may be running out of counter space because of the success of our airlines, so we'll need to look at how to accommodate more air carriers. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'm sorry, did StanTech do the original design of Eisenhower?
I, um, no.
Do you remember who did?
They've been involved in some technology upgrades, I think, if I remember correctly.
It wasn't StanTech that designed Eisenhower, was it?
No.
Okay, okay. But this was selected by a screening committee?
Yes, it was, competitive process, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, any announcements for the good of the group?
No announcement. I'll add to your comments earlier, Mayor. Michelle is actually Michelle Watley. The organization is called Shirley's Kitchen Cabinet, and the amendment is based on something called the Crown Act that has been introduced on the state level by Senator... Fosca Do. It's very important, and if anybody would like to see why it's important, you can look to none other than Texas. There's a young man named Darryl George who has been suspended for having dreadlocks, which is a cultural hairstyle which he's being discriminated against. That does happen in Kansas, it has happened in Wichita. There's just nothing that legally protects people at the moment.
And just, first of all, thank you so much for being able to pull up the organization and the person's full name. I mean no disrespect. And also, I believe Texas, and this might be in her presentation, has actually passed the Crown Act statewide because of this. So, this is a, something that we've seen in other states, and again, we're just following what I consider best practices, but thank you for that.
Yep.
Further conversation? All right, if there's no objections, then we shall adjourn into a...
Oh, Mayor, we have a monthly presentation from staff.
We could do that once we adjourn the real meeting. Yes, we do have monthly presentations, so if there's no objection, we will adjourn this meeting and we'll roll into our monthly presentation from staff.
It's IT.
And it's IT. Excellent.
Mike made a, was gonna make a brief presentation on cybersecurity.
That's kind of important.
Kinda, yeah. And, Mike, I do have to sneak out, I mean, no problems, I have a 12 o'clock thing I have to be at, and it's, the discussion went a little long, so I apologize, Mike, ahead of time.
We have the opioid thing, too.
I got the opioid thing.
I got that.
You got it.
Sorry.
Just, just when I was gonna talk about, you know, you would have an ordinance about hair. Doing a discussion. So, just a few upfront. One, I'm not gonna talk about specifics in terms of what we're doing on the back end. Hopefully, everybody realizes why I'm not going to have those discussions. Obviously, I'm always here, if you wanna have those discussions with me or one of my staff, one-on-one, we would, we're open to have those anytime you have questions. Those are just not something we wanna put out in public, in terms of specifics. So, I just wanted to get that, make that clear. One of the things I wanna talk about is cyber is more comprehensive. As you can imagine, today, right, everything's digital. So, when we're talking about everything from your access cards to doing MFA, to your cellphones, to, right, and Bob was talking to me earlier about getting phishing attacks at home, you're gonna see more and more of that. We stop literally millions of phishing attempts before they ever reach your, your box. Still, some reach your box. And with AI today, you're not going to see the misspellings and the, and the obvious, right, things that you're, oh, yeah, I'm not that dumb, and hit delete. Those are going, you're gonna see those less and less. The reason I put this statistic in here is mainly because operational and mission-critical technology environments. I think it's important that we all understand that because of the nature of tech today, we have some vendors that might not be really caught up, we might think they are, and in some cases, they're not. So, if you see some of those things coming back to you for either a difference in funding or something that we have to do different, that sometimes that's the reason. We trust vendors to have that knowledge. Sometimes we have already found, in some cases, they don't. So, just, that's more of a FYI than anything else. You always have to throw one of these screens up, right, because it's an attention getter. City of Dallas, I know the CIO there, I talk to him on a regular basis. The, the issues that they've had, if you're aware, started in May. They are now, in, or in August, they, they found a number of additional issues. The reason I bring that up is to give you an idea. Now, their infrastructure, obviously, much larger than ours, but the forensics that sometimes it takes to understand what they've gotten into, where they've, how deeply they've gotten into your organization, can take a long time. So, that's the only reason I put that up. Fort Lauderdale, a different type of, right, that was a social engineering attack where a payment was made they thought was legitimate. It was actually, went to bad actors. So, multiple levels that we have to be aware of in terms of how we approach cybersecurity and why it's important to the city. I throw the MGM in there because, as you can imagine, they spend maybe one or two dollars more than the City of Wichita spends on cybersecurity, yet they were hacked. That will be at least 100 million write-off for them, which I imagine for them is not as significant as it would be for us. In terms of what we're, what we're doing, you guys have seen, we do Wiser training. We believe that that's a valuable aspect. It's, it's not only for what you do here at work, but also what you do at home. One of the reasons we like Wiser was you have access to it and your family has access to it. So, if you want to provide family members at home access to this information, you can do that. So, usually, they're just links, so they can go out and they're short videos, very beneficial, what we found. You also know we do MFA. Some people see that as a pain, and I get that. It is kind of that progress towards zero trust. It's one of the steps, right, in terms of best practices. So, while it is, it is just in today's business environment, it's just one of the things that we have to do. So, what we've tried to do is make it as seamless as possible, so it's as easy for you to, to use it as, as, as you move forward. So, October is Cyber, Cyber Security Awareness Month, so we'll, we're doing a little more of a ramped-up campaign with staff. Again, we believe it's important, not only for staff here, but what they do at home and for their families. You guys are targets. You, I'm sure you all already understand that. Bob is a big target, anyone, right, department heads, you're, you're going to be targeted. People don't believe that we get attacked by nation-states, we do. And we get attacked on a regular basis by nation-states. They are well-funded. All they're looking for are holes. Now, the one thing I will tell you, this is not the, the guy sitting in a hoodie in a basement somewhere, you know, on a computer, right? These are automated bots crawling the internet constantly, looking for holes. When they find them, that's when usually people will get involved. But, a lot of this today is automated, and especially with AI, AI on the back end is used as well. You can go out and buy a kit on the dark web to do whatever you wanna do. So, it's, it's, it's kind of a, in one way, it's kind of funny. It's not funny, but it's, right, you can go buy whatever you need to do hacking or if you're a hacktivist. So, you, my point is, you don't have to be a coder anymore. You can just go buy the services. So, when we're talking about the big picture, I just threw that in again to make sure you all understand the expanse of what we're talking about. A lot of times, people think when we're talking about cybersecurity, it's, okay, it's when I'm using my cellphone or my PC. Not the case. We have camera systems, we have our traffic signals, our SCADA systems. So, everything today, pretty much, that we have, is connected to something. And so, all of those, right, come into purview as far as cybersecurity. Even our HVAC systems, right, those are connected to the, not to the internet, but they're, they're all connected. And the SCADA systems, obviously, you all should understand that that's significant, right? We have to be very cognizant of that, the situations that might occur around our SCADA systems. Learning and sharing, so the reason you got the JV today, our, our two cybersecurity folks are actually at, at AusSec, which is actually here in Wichita. So, they're working, learning new things, they actually hack sites, they do some, from what I understand, they do some really cool things at this, which is down at the Drury, if you all wanna go down there and hack something later today. We do a lot of, we're engaged in a lot of partnerships, work very closely with CISA. We have held two meetings with local, smaller cities, engaged with CISA as well, to help them around cybersecurity and what they might need to do. Derby's been compromised, Newton's been compromised. We've had discussions with them, 'cause as you can imagine, we have two, they don't have any. Most of the smaller communities around Wichita do not have any cybersecurity in terms of personnel. So, we're trying to work through the state that, most of you know I was on the, the co-chair of the task force for the state of Kansas on the cybersecurity, and part of that is taking a whole-state approach. And so, how can we all work together?
Push it.
And use resources to help when, when folks have issues. So, that, in essence, I didn't wanna keep you, anytime they put me in between you and lunch, you know, I try and make it as quick as possible. Yes, sir?
I saw one there about email filters. Every once in a while, on my phone, I'll see somebody sends an email, and then I go back and try and check, and I'll remember the name.
Filtered, scrapped it.
Not there anymore.
Yep.
So, is there a chance that we have constituents reaching out to us and their emails aren't getting through the filter process?
Probably not. Usually, what happens if we have bots that check that, if it is something that's been blacklisted, then we don't send it through. If it's not, then we usually send it through and give you the opportunity to look at it and see if it's something that you want to. Now, that, that, that will be, we're testing that in IT now, so probably by the first of '24, you'll start to see those in your email where you can, you can say, oh, no, that, that's good, I know that person. And you can, you can get those. Usually, we will contact you and let you know that, hey, you've got this, and we're not real sure about it.
Okay.
So, so, no, that should, that should not be occurring. If it is, you need to let us know.
Second question. Are there any outside groups that oversee the vendors? I know you talked about we trust the vendors to take care of their issues, but kind of the Ronald Reagan trust of verify.
And we do that. So, so that's, so the reason I brought that up was, in some cases, departments might feel like we're kind of getting in their business, and really, what we're doing is doing that trust and verify. So, right now, we kind of act as that, as that arm, if you will, to have those discussions and make sure that, that our departments are moving forward in the appropriate.
There, there have been training sessions and discussions in finance especially, and if you, we, I think we talked about this a few years ago. We had a person in finance who questioned a payment request that came through and actually did the extra due diligence, and it turned out to be a fraud, and we didn't make the payment. So, the, but that's the social engineering piece of this that isn't gonna just pop up and be caught by a filter, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Does that make some of my conservative friends here happy and quote Reagan for one?
I don't have any questions, but I do wanna say thank you for, for the work you all are doing in a different partisan role. I had a few years ago, we had a briefing from the FBI about that, and it, I know it's a lot deeper than what you said, but I know that's some, some tough work, so definitely appreciate that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more going on. It's that proverbial behind-the-curtain, being from Kansas thing, yeah. There's, there's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, there was, I guess, for everyone here, there was definitely a warning about social media and how your pictures and private information is used to make people think it you.
Yep. And the scary part today is I can literally use AI to copy Bob, Bob's voice and have it call you, and it will sound like Bob.
We should do that. Let's talk.
Okay.
Well, that's, you know, that's been the problem, right? Is, Mike and I have talked about this, but I, you know, I think we've all seen on television, and it's actually happened with businesses, where someone will call and say, I forgot my password, they'll call our help desk, or a help desk, and it sounds just like, you know, the individual. And, you know, that's why we've gotta have another layer of security on that.
AI's changing, changing the game quickly.
You can't just go back to making a telephone call.
Smoke signals?
Hey, that's a little more secure, right?
Vice Mayor, that's all we have.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Yep.
Everybody have a good day.
Thanks.
I was waiting for that.
For which?